This meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. And for the record this evening, Mr. Edwards is out of town for another event that he was scheduled to attend. And Mrs. Manning had a family, a serious family event that she had to take care of this evening. So, at this time, I ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our public awards and recognitions. Mrs. Rye.
Good evening, everybody. It's wonderful to see so many of our principals here this evening. Our schools and school division continue to be on a winning streak of good news. Each year, the Governor and State Board of Education present Virginia Index of Performance Awards to schools and divisions that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals. This year, 23 of our schools, as well as the school division, received this distinction. That number is nearly double, let me repeat, nearly double, the number of awards that we received in 2016. So let's go ahead and meet our 2017 honorees. Our first seven schools received the 2017 Board of Education Excellence Awards, the second highest honor in the state's VIP program. Our principals will accept the award on behalf of their schools. Creed's Elementary, Principal Casey Conger. John B. Dye, Principal Elizabeth Bianchi. Kingston Elementary, Principal Dr. Sharon Schubridge. Old Donation School, Principal Dr. Kelly Hedrick. Princess Anne Elementary, Principal Ivy Roten. Red Mill Elementary, Principal Dr. Michelle Miller. And Thurgood Elementary, Principal Dr. Cheryl Zigrank. So this next award category is presented to schools that met all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress toward goals for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities set by the State Board of Education. Congratulations. Next, 16 schools, as well as the school division, receive Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. The schools are Allentown Elementary, Principal Charlene Guerin. Arrowhead Elementary, Principal Benjamin Gilligan. First Colonial High School, Principal Dr. Nancy Farrell. Great Neck Middle, Principal Dr. Eugene Saltner. Hermitage Elementary, Principal Angela Minari. Indian Lakes Elementary, Principal Jennifer Bourne. Kempsville Elementary, Principal Lori Hasher. Linkhorn Park Elementary, Principal Barbara Sesums. Malibu Elementary, Principal Michael Harris. Ocean Lakes High, Principal Dr. Claire LeBlanc. Princess Anne High, Principal Danny Little. Princess Anne Middle, Principal Dr. Alex Bergren. Rosemont Elementary, Principal Carrie Hall. Salem High, accepting is the school's SCA President, Amy Leo. Or sponsor, I guess. Strawbridge Elementary, Principal Jacqueline Sargent. Three Oaks Elementary, Principal Linda Sedon. And accepting the school division's award is Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Amy Cashwell. This award category recognizes schools and divisions that met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress toward the goals of the Governor and the State Board of Education. Congratulations to all of you on this well-deserved, outstanding distinction. Madam Chairwoman, this is our only recognition this evening.
Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. You know, just four days ago, I and members of our senior leadership team were fortunate enough to be on hand for the Second Annual STEM Lab Learning Day at Naval Air Station Oceana. To say that this day was an incredible opportunity and experience for our children is an understatement. Throughout the day, we witnessed more than 5,000 of our 5th graders engaged in real-world, hands-on learning. Our students took part in state-of-the-art demonstrations and exhibits from some of the biggest organizations in the world. They got to meet and talk with Navy jet pilots and engineers and see how the very subjects they are studying now align with the careers they could have tomorrow. So tonight, I'm proud to highlight the partnership that made Friday's event possible and present this month's Compass Keeper, NAS Oceana.
The City of Virginia Beach and Naval Air Station Oceana built a relationship and decided to build this STEM program based on our airshow director's work with Fleet Week in New York. He saw a STEM program up there on a much smaller scale and thought, what a great place to showcase STEM and get kids in Virginia Beach school system involved in STEM than at the airshow here where they can put their hands on different things and they can see all this science, technology, engineering, and math on display.
When we found out about the opportunity to have a hands-on learning experience here at the base, we knew that the connections, not only to our rich academic curriculum, but to Compass 2020, were abound. When we think about the fact that Compass 2020 outlines expectations around rigorous academic coursework, but also setting all students on a pathway that helps them be career, military, or college-ready, this experience really captures all of those opportunities.
Virginia Beach School Systems has a great reputation. People actually want to come to Oceana and get orders to hear because of the school system that's here. So it's a huge support for our military mission here to know that families can come here and their kids are going to get a great education and then they can move on and do whatever they want to do, go to college, enter the workforce, enter the military. So that relationship that we have built, I think, is critical to the success of the military.
We know that all of our students living right here in Virginia Beach, though they may see the jets flying overhead every day, may have never had an opportunity to actually get on base and experience just the joy of an airshow. So between the academic exposure and just the connections to our own local community, particularly our military, this partnership is really one of a kind.
The Oceana airshow, in particular the STEM event on Friday, has become my favorite event of the year. I just love seeing all these kids out here. They get so excited about all the technology and everything that's out here, just to see the smiles on their faces. They're giving me the thumbs up as they're leaving on the buses. And hopefully that'll motivate them to study science, technology, engineering, and math when they get back to school.
Well, I hope that gives you a sense of how amazing that day was. You do have to, I think, see it to believe it. And as you can imagine, these kinds of events aren't just put together overnight. They take months of planning and conference calls and walkthroughs to make sure that our children have the best and safest experience possible. I know they couldn't be here tonight, but I know they're here in spirit, and so we want to acknowledge our partners at NAS Oceana, especially CEO Rich Meadows and XO Chad Vincellet, who really were instrumental in driving this partnership. And we want to thank them for everything that they and their command have done to partner with us throughout the years and make this day a reality. I also want to thank our own team. Specifically, I want to highlight Sharon Lewis, Amy Cashwell, and Leslie Hughes and their teams for all of the time and effort. And they have put a lot of time and effort working with Oceana to make this day manageable for our principals and our teachers and for ensuring that those learning activities that you saw are perfectly aligned with our curriculum. As always, tonight's Compass Keeper video will be posted on the homepage at vbschools.com. And you can also visit our division blog, The Core, to read about other members of the Compass Keepers Club. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That does complete my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have one.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Ainsley Proctor, and I am here representing the Hampton Roads Chapter of Decoding Dyslexia Virginia. Now, this marks the third year since I've spoke to the Virginia Beach School Board in support of Dyslexia Awareness Month. And 2017 has been an exceptional year for dyslexia awareness in the Virginies' public school systems. Two new laws became in effect in July. One law requires all teachers seeking a new license or renewal of a license to complete a 40-minute dyslexia awareness training module. The other law requires each local school board to employ reading specialists specifically trained to help dyslexic students. Every year, I get asked why dyslexia should be singled out for its own recognition since October is also National Disabilities Awareness Month. The reason is simple: it is important for one of our educators to know. Dyslexia is the most common learning disability. It affects as many as 1 in 5 students in every classroom. And for far too long, not enough has been done to train our educators about dyslexia or to provide them the resources to help dyslexic students in their classroom. As we celebrate these two new laws, we view the progress as a small step in the right direction. There is still much work to be done. What we need now is dyslexia screening for every student in our schools. Dyslexia can be identified as early as age 4, and we need research-based reading programs and specialized instruction tailored to remediate dyslexia. These proven ways to teach dyslexic students how to read are not new or controversial. Research suggests that if all students were taught to read using programs that work for dyslexic students, reading achievement would be improved overall in our schools. All students would benefit, and it is actually reduced costs associated with providing special education services. Many of you have a personal connection to someone with dyslexia, so you're aware that dyslexic students can graduate from college, leave productive lives, and contribute to society. But this cannot happen without proper identification and remediation. Please help us to make that a reality in Virginia Beach's public schools. On behalf of the Hampton Roads Chapter of Decoding Dyslexia Virginia, thank you for continuing to support Dyslexia Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers I've signed up for the hearing on agenda items.
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on September 6. Mrs. Riggs, I wanted to say Mrs. Rye, because Mrs. Rye always sits there. Mrs. Riggs has made the motion. Ms. Melnick has seconded. That's correct. We have two abstentions because they were not here last time. Thank you. So the minutes of our September 6 meeting have been approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this meeting. Mr. McDonald has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Melnick. The voting board is open. The consent agenda has a resolution for recognizing Dyslexia Awareness Month. Mrs. Holtz, would you read the resolution, please?
It was not given to you? Thank you, we have one.
Resolution for Dyslexia Awareness Month, October 2017. Whereas dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that causes difficulties with reading, writing, spelling, and word pronunciation; and whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies for each individual; and whereas it takes individuals with dyslexia longer to process phonemic information, thus affecting academic growth, achievement, and self-esteem; and whereas it is important to provide effective teaching approaches and educational intervention strategies for individuals with dyslexia; and whereas Dyslexia Awareness Month is an opportunity to acknowledge educators utilizing effective teaching strategies and to celebrate the many achievements of adolescents, students, and adults with dyslexia; and whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is committed to continued focus on educating students, parents, and school staff about effective teaching strategies to address the needs of students with learning disabilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designates the month of October to be Dyslexia Awareness Month, and be it further resolved that strategies and interventions to address the needs of students with learning disabilities be ongoing in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be spread across the official minutes of the board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 19th day of September 2017.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtz. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. Rye has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Voting board is open. Thank you. The consent agenda has been approved. The action part of our agenda has four items this evening, with the first item being the personnel report. Personnel and administrative appointments. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the personnel and administrative appointments. The motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Holtz. Is there any discussion? The voting board is open. Dr. Spence, do you have any introductions for new administrators?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we sure do. If I could ask John Ogden to please stand up. Mr. Ogden, in addition to his distinguished service in the United States Navy as an instructor, trainer, and analyst, and systems maintenance manager, has served most recently here in the Department of Technology as a programmer and analyst. And this evening, I'm pleased to note that you've approved our recommendation for him to serve as Human Resources Specialist in the Department of Human Resources. Congratulations, Mr. Ogden. And I believe you have a guest with you.
Yes, sir, I brought my wife, Ron Dog.
Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations again. And that is it, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Next on action, we have budget transfers requiring School Board approval. The Chair will now entertain a motion for the budget transfers. Mr. McDonald has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Is there any discussion? I think we have some explanations coming up. Mr. Hansiger?
Chairwoman Anderson, members of the School Board, Dr. Spence. Okay. You recall back in July during your School Board retreat, we shared with you this spending plan option for utilizing the undesignedated part of the full-day kindergarten preschool initiative. And this year, our estimate is we would spend about $2.1 million, which is the first year of the phase-in of the full-day program, leaving $4,650,000. We've identified those types of expenditures and the amounts that we would use this year. They're one-time kinds of expenditures, they're not building into the recurring budget. And so, we've given you a two-part on two agenda items, one titled "The Budget Transfers" and one is a budget resolution. The budget transfers relate to those transfers that are required beyond the super delegated authority and Dr. Spence's delegated authority in order to move the funds into the right codes. The second part of that is we want them to move $900,000 to a couple of CIP projects. In order to do that, it requires not only the School Board's approval, but we have to take that one to the City Council. Therefore, we have to have a resolution that goes to the City Council. So it's a two-parter. One is just strictly the budget transfers that you will approve. The second is a resolution for the CIP that you will also approve, in addition to the City Council will need to approve.
Are there any questions at this time? Mr. McDonald, would you please read the resolution?
I would be happy to. Budget resolution fiscal year 2017-18, operating budget funds transfer to capital improvement program, CIP. Whereas on July 18, 2017, the School Board was presented with an overview of the non-dedication portion of funds in year one from the full-day kindergarten and pre-kindergarten expansion. And whereas the School Board supported the priority need spending plan as proposed by the administration. And whereas as part of the spending plan, the estimated fiscal year 2017-18 operating budget funds available for transfer to the school's pay-go for the CIP is $900,000. And whereas the administration recommends the following for the available funds in the amount of $900,000: $750,000 transferred for Project 1-99, renovations and replacements, ground phase II; and $150,000 transferred for Project 1-105, renovations and replacements, various phase II. Now be it therefore resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach approves the transfer of funds from the fiscal year 2017-18 operating budget to the school's pay-go for CIP projects as shown above in the amount of $900,000. And be it further resolved that the School Board requests that the City Council approve the transfer of funds from the fiscal year 2017-18 operating budget to the school's pay-go for CIP projects as shown above. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, and a clerk of the board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of City Council, and the city manager, and the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. The voting board is open. The budget transfers has been approved. Item C under action is the school counseling program. We were presented with information about this at our last meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the school counseling program. Is there a motion? Mrs. Rye has made the motion. Ms. McLeod has seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. The school counseling program has been approved. The last item under action is the Family Life Education Curriculum, which we were also presented with information about this curriculum at our last meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Family Life Education Curriculum. Ms. McLeod has made the motion, seconded by Ms. Holtz. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, the voting board is open. The Family Life Curriculum has been approved. Under the information part of our agenda, we have several items this evening. The first information item is the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy Evaluation. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. In September 2015, the School Board approved the proposal for the EBA to open a Kempsville High School as a school within a school in September 2016. The academy was designed to offer students a rigorous academic curricula with three business-related strands. Toward the end of grade nine, students chose which strand they would pursue. 57% chose entrepreneurship and innovation. 23% chose business information technology. And 20% chose corporate finance. The one-year evaluation focused on how the academy's implementation process compared to the proposal approved by the School Board. Evaluation questions addressed the academy's implementation, participant characteristics, progress towards goals and objectives, stakeholder perceptions, and the additional cost to the division. Data for the evaluation came from the data warehouse and was used to compare the EBA students with all other 9th graders at Kempsville High School. Data also came from interviews of the academy coordinator and principal, as well as from surveys of students, parents, staff, and community partners. The table on the slide displays the survey response rates. Important components of the EBA's implementation are included on the slide. All of the interim tasks noted in the academy proposal were completed in time for the academy to open on schedule. The academy coordinator was hired in August 2015 and led the selection of the academy's six teachers. EBA staff began receiving academy-related professional learning before the academy opened and throughout the school year. 100% of EBA staff had positive perceptions of the professional learning. Major renovations were rescheduled until the summer of 2018. The academy opened with two classrooms and an improvised maker space for designing and developing prototype projects. Despite the rescheduled renovations, at least 83% of the stakeholders were satisfied with the EBA facilities. With regard to transportation, no serious logistical issues arose. In effect, the evaluation found that all essential operational components were in place when the EBA opened. Various elements of the grade-nine coursework were perceived favorably by students, parents, and staff. At least 85% of the stakeholders agreed the environment was flexible, the coursework was challenging and advanced, and the coursework required students to think critically and solve problems creatively. Three types of enrichment activities added breadth, depth, and real-world context to the academy coursework. Students, parents, and staff were very satisfied with the guest speakers, field trips, and community service opportunities. In turn, the evaluation found very high rates of agreement, 96% or above, that the EBA provided students opportunities to gain the skills that they would need for success. A very important component of the EBA's implementation involves the students who attended the academy. The academy received 265 applications. The academy sent 226 letters to offer admission. 118 students accepted the offers, and 108 students were enrolled in the academy in September. Those 108 enrolled students were demographically similar with regards to gender and race compared to other freshmen within Kempsville and across all Virginia Beach high schools, with some differences in economic, English learner, special education, and gifted status. On average, the EBA group in 8th grade had outperformed the non-EBA group on SOL tests. Geographically, 75% of the EBA students resided outside the Kempsville attendance zone. The academy had one goal: to provide students the business skills and knowledge necessary to succeed in college and the workforce. The goal was accompanied by six objectives. The first objective was for EBA students to successfully complete a business-oriented program of study consisting of- program of study consisting of core, academy-specific, and elective courses. 99% of the EBA students earned a C average or better in grade nine. The second objective involved the EBA students being provided two potential ways to earn post-secondary credit. One was through enrollment in advanced placement classes. Compared with the non-EBA group of Kempsville ninth graders, the EBA students tended to avail themselves of the AP opportunity, and they tended to outperform their non-EBA counterparts. The second potential way to earn college credit will be by taking dual enrollment courses after ninth grade through TCC, which will enable students to earn an associate's degree by the time they graduate high school. Progress toward meeting the third objective involved passing SOL assessments. From 96% to 100% of the EBA students in dark blue passed the SOL math, science, and social studies tests, and in most cases, outperformed the non-EBA group. EBA students are expected to earn a variety of workplace-related credentials. For the year-one EBA students, this mainly involved passing tests related to becoming a certified office specialist in Microsoft Word, Excel, and/or PowerPoint. 100% of the EBA students took a certification test compared with only 5% of the non-EBA students. In fact, all of the EBA students took at least two of the office specialist tests. Both groups performed well. The academy made progress during year one toward meeting the final three objectives. They developed relationships with local businesses and professionals who will host job shadowing for students starting this year and who will mentor students or host internships thereafter. The academy also made progress toward meeting the sixth objective, which called for the academy to establish collaborative relationships with higher educational institutions. Agreements now exist with Tidewater Community College regarding dual enrollment classes toward an associate's degree, and talks with Old Dominion University are progressing for students to have guaranteed enrollment when they finish their associates at TCC. Further, the EBA partnered with Babson College in Wellesley, Massachusetts for professional learning for academy teachers. With respect to the academy after its first year of operation, levels of overall satisfaction with the EBA were quite high among all respondents. In addition, 97% of students planned to continue in the academy during 2017-18, and 92% of students would recommend the academy to others. Finally, the evaluation compared the budget from the academy proposal to the actual one-time startup expenses and the recurring operating expenses. Despite delaying expenditures on school facility improvements and mainly because of an unbudgeted purchase of buses, the EBA's one-time startup costs exceeded the planning budget by about The recurring operating costs exceeded the planning budget by about $140,000, which was due in part to an academy coordinator allocation during the planning year, which was anticipated but not included in the proposed planning budget. As a result of the one-year evaluation, it is recommended that the EBA continue without modifications because the academy's operation was found to largely correspond with what had been set forth in the proposal approved by the school board. At this time, Mr. William Harris, principal of Kempsville High School, will present the administration's response.
Good evening, everyone. We concur with the recommendation provided in the report, and wanted to take this time to thank the school board for the opportunity to open the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kempsville High School. The success in the first year is attributed to our amazing community and to our amazing staff, most of whom are all right over there, and our amazing academy coordinator as well. We look forward to the exciting growth in future years of this program within our school division, and will be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Ms. McLeod?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm not for sure who's going to answer it, so I'm going to let you know it has everything to do with dual enrollment, all my questions. So, I am on this page, just to help you out here, 43 of your report, if you have that in front of you. And this is just a chart that has all of the template from grades nine through 12 of the coursework that they can take. And so, I'm looking here, all the dual enrollment that is offered through this Entrepreneur Academy is amazing. They're able to take, encouraged to take dual enrollment pre-calc or calc, history, government, macroeconomics, microeconomics, public speaking, statistics, biology, and even PE, as Mrs. Melnick pointed out to me. I think I missed a literature one on here. But additionally, there's a lot of just open dual enrollment course as an elective type of thing. My questions for you are, do you have all the teaching staff with the Entrepreneur Academy to actually teach all these dual enrollment classes? And for, the other question would be, is are you going to allow other high school students that would reap the benefits of these dual enrollment classes from Kempsville High School to take them as well? If the classes make, let's go for it. Third question, distance learning. Can we let other students at other high schools take distance learning dual enrollment? Okay.
Okay, outstanding.
Thank you.
My answer is a little bit broader than just the EBA and just more in-depth with dual enrollment. So, the first question was having the teachers. Currently, we have in the budget with professional development where teachers are getting their credentials to teach it. There are several teachers at Kempsville right now that are qualified to teach many of the courses, but not all of the courses. So, we also have, each year, we work in MOU with TCC to offer these courses on their campus as well for our students.
Okay.
And we're trying to broaden that to online courses that they offer at TCC as well. Second question was if we...
Other students?
Yeah, the other Kempsville students. If there's open seats, absolutely, students can sit in and take the dual enrollment courses.
Does the academy limit the number of students per class by virtue of being an academy in any way?
No.
Okay, cool.
And that's similar across all of our academies. So, like Ocean Lakes High School, if someone wants to take a higher-level math or science and they're a zone student, they can sit in the class and take it if there's a seat. Same with IB, they can sit in a class and take it if there's a seat. The third question was around distance learning. I've actually had the discussion with Mr. Johnson, our director of instructional technology, and Bruce Harrison, the coordinator for distance learning. We have transferred in the middle school to a more of a laptop-based distance learning instead of a monitor-based distance learning. And if that is successful, that's something we'd like to look at in the high school realm. So, we're going to offer more courses. Currently, our DL labs are filled all eight blocks with world languages, higher-level AP courses that aren't, that don't make it other classes, or other schools, rather. So, there's a need for more distance learning, and a more affordable way to do it is to do more of a laptop-based course, and that is in the discussion. And any course that we offer, we want to be able to offer to all of our students. Also, in conversations with ODU right now about creating pathways for our teachers to get credentials in teaching dual enrollment courses across the division, and working with TCC because they have a robust online program to allow our teachers to become trained through TCC's online learning program, so they can teach online through TCC, so we get the reduced rate that way, too.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All good stuff. That is great. Thank you. Happy with the answers.
Thank you. Mrs. Weems?
Actually, my question was about distance learning also, but I just want to say congratulations. And could we introduce the coordinator? And then, could you have your staff to stand up, please? Because I know they're here with us.
Yeah, they are. So, Megan Tinlin, I'm the coordinator, and some of our teachers are here with us tonight. Mr. Adam Honeycutt teaches technology education. Ms. Sarah Rutsis teaches our Introduction to Entrepreneurship and Business class, and Ms. Ashley Haltons teaches several of our entrepreneurship classes. Ms. Mary Bubba-Horopoulos teaches honors English, academy honors English IX, and her counterpart, Catherine Bailey, teaches honors English IX as well. And Mr. Drew Midgette teaches World Studies for Business II. So, just some of our teachers, and we're really thrilled that they're here tonight.
You're welcome.
Well, I was kidding with you folks about, you know, a perfect recommendation, no changes, so you're doing perfect. But then they said, "Not perfect? Yeah, give us year two." So, year two next year, you will be perfect. Thank you.
Mrs. Frye?
Thank you. So, I'll start with a question and then a few comments. I noticed that 18 sophomores were accepted for this year. So, who would like to respond on how those students get assimilated?
Okay, so, those students, we take applications for sophomores to fill in some of those seats because we can accept up to 125 in a class. So, those students come in knowing what strand they're interested in studying, and we go over that. We have a separate registration just for 10th graders and their parents. And so, since there were only 18 of them, it was a very small, more intimate registration process where they spent time with the coordinator or the counselor and myself in determining what they wanted to study in. And so, they're automatically in with the 10th grade, they're in a strand, all of them are comfortable. I actually was in a finance class today, and one of the ones with the most questions was one of our new students into that program. So, we hope that they just feel right at home, as long as our ninth graders that have been with us for a year.
So, along those lines, are you going to cap it there? In other words, you wouldn't take them as a junior?
Correct. We get to a point where they're...
Because they had just a limited number of academy-specific courses as freshmen. And beyond after that, it gets, you never would catch up.
Well, correct. They get into the depth and the rigor of the strand, starting in 10th grade, and it would be difficult to catch up with the rigor of the content. They would miss a lot if they're not in ninth and 10th grade. So, we will not accept beyond 10th grade at this time.
So, I recognize a lot of the staff. I had the opportunity to visit frequently last year, and I just have to say publicly, what's, I mean, in a year's time, 40 business partnerships, an endowment fund. I mean, teachers that I've, with speaking with and to see the job opportunity for you with each successive year, that you're all working on curriculum for these new courses. I mean, everywhere you turn, it's just great news and great excitement. And, you know, to read these survey results, you know, with all the surveys we take, it's hard to top this. What else did I want to ask? Just in terms of the attrition rate, which is terrific, but when you have less matriculate for whatever the reason, they move over the summer or whatever, you do have a waiting list, but did you turn, but it didn't look like you turned to a waiting list, or did you?
Yes, we accepted students off a waiting list for quite a while. Yes, ma'am.
Good. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, you guys, for doing a fantastic job, and I commend you all. Thank you very much. You're on your way.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Item B in the information part of the agenda is the budget calendar for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Mr. Honsaker? Here we go.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Basically, if you look at the calendar, and then based on your conversation you had in the workshop in terms of moving to the second and fourth Tuesdays beginning in January, well, first of all, let me address the issue of the public hearing in December. That's just for input, and we're required by state code to have two public hearings regarding the budget. So, we do one in the beginning of kind of the formal process, and then we do one after the superintendent's estimate of needs is presented. So, having said that, that's, you know, we wouldn't want to change that day. We've got to meet the state code requirements. If you look at the calendar, and based on assuming you go to the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday, what you would do is, we would be presenting the superintendent's estimate of needs on the 13th instead of the 6th of February. Your first budget workshop would be the 20th instead of the 13th. Your second budget workshop would be the 27th instead of the 20th. Your third workshop would be March 6th instead of February 27th, and you would be scheduled to adopt the budget or have a fourth workshop if you needed it on March 13th. We would then have, we would need an extra week from the city to get the budget finalized that you adopted on the 13th to the city. We're going to clear that with the city staff tomorrow. So, because we can't get them the budget if you haven't adopted the budget, and we need a week to put everything together. So, those would be the changes on the budget calendar. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Ms. McLeod?
Not really. Well, it is a question, but not for Farrell. It's actually for Diane, Ms. Alexander. So, I brought it up during the workshop regarding the public hearing because of the way it was worded. So, just for good measure, Ms. Alexander, can you tell us the process of how our public knows, or maybe it's Eileen with the media relations, but I know you have to put the agenda in the board, how does our public know that this is the right time for them to give input, and what resources do they have ahead of time?
Well, there will be a public notice put in the newspaper, and we will also include on our agenda more definitive language that states it's for public input, and then how to go about signing up to speak for that and what it's for.
Is our budget at that point, is there anything out there publicly, Mr. Honsaker? Okay, so it's really just for them to chime in and say, "I think you should put lights in on baseball fields," or "I think you should," whatever the case is. They can, anything that they would like to recommend.
We would have posted on the website the calendar, so the public would have access to seeing when the different steps to the board's deliberation on the budget are, and it would include that date.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry that I added confusion this morning, but I thought, how do they know what to comment on if they don't know what's in it? So, pass the bill, and we'll read what's in it.
So, basically, that first public comment session would be for people to give us their recommendations from the public for what they would like to see happen with our upcoming budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the date for that, again, is December 5th. Just for public knowledge. Okay. Ms. Weems?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of explain, for those that are watching or in the audience that did not come to our workshop, the reason why Farrell's changing the date so much is because we had discussed earlier about perhaps meeting the second and fourth Tuesday in the month so that folks could go to city council, formal meetings, and our meetings as well, so they're not on the same night. So, that's why there were so many changes, because usually Farrell doesn't do last-minute changes like that, do you, Farrell, with the budget? So, just to let everybody know, that's...
Thank you, Ms. Weems, for clarifying that. Is, are there any other comments or questions about this? Thank you. Our next information item is the interim financial statements. Mrs. Pate?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Anderson, school board members, Dr. Spence. For the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017, the overall final revenue trend was unfavorable with an actual under-budget amount of approximately $3.8 million. The Commonwealth of Virginia revenue source was unfavorable with 99.8% of the budget being collected and an actual under-budget of $3.1 million. This was due to the elimination of the $2.7 million compensation supplement funding from the state's budget, certain state revenues being less than estimated as a result of a slightly lower-than-projected March 31 ADM, and final payments based on actual expenditures for certain programs being less than anticipated. The federal government revenue source was favorable with an actual over-budget of $987,000, mainly due to receiving impact aid payments at a more acceptable level during the year, as well as an increase in our Medicaid reimbursements for the year. The state sales tax revenue source was unfavorable with 97.8% of the budget being collected and an actual under-budget of $1.7 million. As illustrated in the first graph, fiscal year 2017 did come in higher than the previous fiscal year. As you recall, mid-year, the state had did lower the revised sales tax estimate, and as expected, actual sales tax receipts did come in under-budget for the year. And as required by basic aid formula requirements, this shortfall was partially offset with an increase in the basic aid revenue based on the division's composite index. Other revenue sources were unfavorable with 99.2% of the budget being collected and an actual under-budget of approximately $24,000, mainly due to a decrease in facilities rental revenue for the year. This next graph illustrates a breakdown of the total revenues by major source. The city contributed 54.8%, the Commonwealth of Virginia 33.6%, sales tax 9.5%, federal government 1... government 1.7%, and other sources 0.4%. The final expenditure trend for fiscal year 2017 was favorable in all categories. Overall, remaining unspent and unencumbered balance was $21.1 million. Looking at the total expenditures for the fiscal year by category illustrated by this next graph, instructional category comprised 69.9%, operation and maintenance was 11.5%, transportation 5%, technology 4.5%, and admin attendance and health 3.1%, and debt service was 6%. As presented on Schedule B1 of your documents, you will find a summary of the reversion back to the city's general fund, with a revenue shortfall of approximately $3.8 million and the remaining unspent unencumbered balance of $21.1 million, and with all adjustments and prepaid items being accounted for, the reversion back to the city was $17.1 million. This reversion includes approximately $361,000 from the Green Run Charter School Fund and approximately $562,000 from the School Athletic Fund. The revenues that comprise the city and school board revenue sharing formula on a preliminary basis came in over-budget. Our share of that surplus is just over $3 million. The reversion amounts and the amounts from the revenue sharing formula will be available for the board's future consideration or appropriation. A resolution for that will be presented in October for the board's consideration. The revenue sharing formula and these figures presented are unaudited and subject to change. Your July and August interim financial statements are also included in your board documents this evening. They're being presented to you under Virginia State Code. However, they are abbreviated statements. We run a dual year during those months, so there are no salaries and benefits for 10-month employees. The incomparances from prior year have not been rolled forward, and there are other adjustments. So these statements are not as meaningful or as comparable as the financial statements that we've presented to the board in September. This concludes the presentation. I'll be glad to address any questions the board's had.
Are there any questions at this time? Thank you, Ms. Pate.
Thank you.
Our last information item is the Policy Review Committee recommendations. Mrs. Lanetti?
Madam Chairwoman, school board members, and Dr. Spence, I'm Camille Lanetti. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be presenting the recommendations that came out of the Policy Review Committee's August meeting. First on your packet is Policy 4-4. This has to do with the equal employment, nondiscrimination, and compliance officers. These are just standard documents. The only change that we made in this particular policy was to update it in Section B, just the orders the same way as we have with other discrimination policies. So that's the only change that we made in that particular one. 4-5 has to do with criminal charges. After review with the Human Resources Department, they determined that it was not necessary to have all the categories, we simply collapsed it. And in those cases, when an employee has a felony or misdemeanor charge or a Child Protective Services charge, they just need to notify the superintendent. And that's the only changes we're making in that particular policy. Policy 4-6 is the Equal Opportunity Employment Plan. In Policy 4-4 that we just saw, we collapsed the Equal Opportunity Plan into that. In particular areas, there's no need for that. We're just recommending that that be repealed. And Policy 4-36, Payroll Deductions, recommendations of the Human Resource Department, there are just simply some minor changes into that. Nothing significant was changed in that particular policy. Policy 4-37, again, has to do with insurance and retirement plans. Again, nothing significant, just minor updated changes based on recommendations from the Human Resource Department. 4-39 is Employee Professional Development and Reimbursement. On there, there are some significant changes in there. We've actually collapsed the policy you'll see following this in 464 into this particular one. Not significant changes, but more, better identifies how we do these issues and how we do reimbursement matters on there. 464, as I mentioned, was classed basically into the 4, or 39, so we decided it would be, best recommendation would be to repeal that, and all those matters involving employee growth and skills will be handled in the prior policy. Policy 465 has to do with meetings and conferences. There were not significant changes, but there were some changes having to do with meetings on there and how they were classifying meetings. And so those recommendations are before you right now. In 470, Licensed Teacher, the only names, only changes we're making were some minor name changes on there. And in 464, I'm sorry, 484, again, as I mentioned, growth skills, we had incorporated that into the Employee Professional Reimbursement Training policy that you saw in 439. So those are the recommendations brought forth to you by the Policy Review Committee at this time. If you have questions on any of these, I'll be happy to answer them, or Mrs. Frye or the other committee members can assist in that.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. On Policy 4-65, which is the meetings and conferences, in here, we have basically three sections where employees or teachers are required to either meet at their school or meet parents for conferences or go to workshops and then training programs. Along with the requirement, I would highly recommend that the Policy Review Committee consider adding a notification requirement to these of at least like one calendar week to ensure that employees have time to adjust their schedules if they are required to stay after school past contract time for these meetings. I think that would be a great professional courtesy that this board could extend to our employees and something that will hopefully better order meetings that are in our buildings. And I know of some situations that have caused conflicts and even disciplinary action for teachers that weren't able to attend meetings because they didn't have time to adjust their schedules, and I'd like to see that rectified.
Clarification, Mr. McDonald, you're concerned about those meetings that are outside of the regular hours as opposed to saying you need to be in the meeting at 2:00?
Correct. Anything within a normal school day, I think, would be fine, but those things that are after the contractual time after school or even before school time, I believe that teachers need to have some sort of, there should be some sort of notification requirement so that if a meeting is called by a principal at a school that's an after-school meeting, there's at least a calendar week notice so that they can make those arrangements to stay. If a parent wants to have a parent-teacher conference, that teacher will at least have a week's notice that they may take advantage of. They may schedule it wide away depending on their individual circumstances, but there shouldn't be an expectation there that on the next day or that day, they are supposed to stay for that meeting.
And you'd like the Policy Review Committee to look at the timing, how much notification thinks appropriate in addition to those things, those meetings that happen outside of contractual hours?
I think that'd be appropriate for the committee to have that discussion before bringing its policy back to us, yes.
You're not recommending a specific time, like seven days?
I would say at least a calendar week, but that's open for debate.
Ms. McLeod?
Up for debate. I don't, I agree that anytime we can provide that professional courtesy of letting our employees know when a meeting is going to be, but if, and you're good with language, Mrs. Lanetti. So any, I would think that there may be times that principals need to have a meeting of the faculty because it's based on an emergency type of situation, something has happened. So the language, in my opinion, should be, when possible, or whatever good language you come up with, so that if you do have an emergency situation where they do need to meet, that that's understood, and that would be a responsibility of an employee. You know, that would happen anywhere in any business. And then the other part would, my hesitancy of parent-teacher conferences is that it could be something that needs to be resolved in a day or two versus an entire week, and that parent is festering and upset, and the child has still got to come to class at least potentially two or three, or in the elementary every day to that particular teacher. So I have caution there. So I would like for the policy committee has now heard me share my concern, but if there's a way to do language that can accomplish all of that. So there's my debate.
Mr. McDonald, again?
Yeah, I think that's, those are good points. I think that it's the requirement that's sticky without the notification. So if an emergency meeting at a school felt necessary by a principal, first, the determination of what constitutes an emergency is one up for debate as well. But it's, you know, if for some reason an employee cannot be there if a meeting is called before that notification requirement, I'm just, I think that disciplinary action should not be able to be taken against them. I'm not saying that there should be no meetings. I'm saying, I think for the most part, everyone is going to try their best to attend any of those meetings, but there's just some situations where they cannot because they have arranged their schedules around what is their normal workday, and these meetings do come up. And I would just like to make sure that we provide adequate notifications so that they can make sure that they're there to avoid any of those incidents. For issues with parent-teachers, I think most teachers would want to take care of situations like that as soon as possible anyways. I'm just saying there should be no expectation that might lead to disciplinary action should a teacher not be able to meet with those parents, you know, immediately.
So are we rec, Ms. Frye?
Yes, I mean, we're certainly happy to entertain further discussion at the committee level. I would just share, it's always a, our challenge is always, is it a policy matter or an employee matter? And so I think it's possible there could be general enough language. I think what we all expect is reasonable people, is that notice, you know, advance notice be given as soon as is reasonably possible. And sometimes that could be a week ahead, and in other times, it could be, you know, we have to meet tomorrow. So I just, but we'll be happy to revisit that.
I appreciate it.
So are we recommending that Policy 4-65 go back to the committee for revision?
For discussion.
With Mrs. Frye's approval, we can have that. There is a meeting on the 21st, and so we can look and see if we've got adequate response from the administration, and maybe I'll just take it up at that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Lanetti. Next, we have standing committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report to give us this evening? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Legislative Committee met this afternoon to begin our process of drafting the board's legislative agenda for the 2018 session of the General Assembly. Members of senior staff are assisting with the updating of specific areas in our agenda, and we will also be placing a focus on teacher recruitment and retention issues to address teacher shortages, an issue that is being discussed throughout the Commonwealth. We will have the agenda to the board for workshop information and action in November. I appreciate the proposal submitted by board members leading to today's meeting. Next Friday, the Legislative Committee is co-hosting breakfast with the superintendent at the Advanced Technology Center and to include a school tour for state and federal legislators and their legislative aides. The breakfast will be September 29th at the Advanced Technology Center. Board members are invited to attend. November is Take Your Legislature to School Month. We will be encouraging our delegation to come and visit and see the great things happening in our schools. In December, board meetings will have, board members will have the opportunity to meet with each member of our delegation individually to discuss our approved legislative agenda prior to session. In the past, the Legislative Committee has organized a lobbying trip to Richmond during session. However, with the General Assembly offices having been moved as part of the replacement of their offices and due to the size and organization of the current space, for now, we will not be scheduling a trip to Richmond. However, if things change, we will let the board know. Even while we may not be organizing this trip, I want to stress that we will continue to communicate with our delegation during session regarding our legislative agenda and bills that we need to respond to.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Are there any other standing committee reports this evening? Okay, seeing none. This meeting, this formal part of our meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, do we have any?